This is Jason Anderson. It is 7:00 PM on Tuesday, October 11th, and we are calling this regular town council meeting to order. Mr. Wood, if you could open the...
Public hearing.
Actually, public hearing at 7:00. Yep, alright, we'll do that first. Force of habit. Alright, so a public hearing is on items 14A, 14B, 14C, and 14D. Ms. Gloria, could you just go over these real quick?
Yes, so the 14A is with regards to the expenditure of $100,000 of American Rescue Act funding for the Wyndham 4-H Dam project, repair project. This has been reviewed by the town's fiscal subcommittee and the town council, put it forward to public hearing for tonight. In your packet, it does also include the last meeting, the council had requested a detail of how the $100,000 would be spent. And your packet includes how that $100,000, and will be focused on one of the repairs specific to one of the spillway areas. The second item for public hearing is the expenditure of $200,000, $500 for of American Rescue Act funding for the fire departments, for life safety and communication upgrades. And this is for radio communication for each of the departments, as well as a Lucas tool for each of the departments. The last two are for permanent drainage easements, one on 249 Bailey Hill Road, and the last one is 146 Pineville Road, which are both drainage easements.
Thank you. Anyone who would like to speak to anything that is open for public hearing, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address.
Hello? I'll stop. My name is Tracy Martin-Turgeon. I live at 368 Green Hollow Road in Killenly, Connecticut. I wanted to talk about the dam at the 4-H camp. My daughter attends the Killenly High School. She's part of the agriculture program. She's also been attending the 4-H camp for about eight years now. This camp doesn't only just teach children about the dam, but they teach them leadership skills. They teach them daily life skills. They teach them how to solve problems without electronics in their hands. There's no phones or computers. This dam is a central part of this camp, and it teaches children a lot and gave her the love of agriculture, which she got accepted into the Killenly program. I am urging all of you to still fund this program so that not only my grandchildren, but your grandchildren can attend this program for years to come, and we can get more children involved in the agriculture program. So please be a part of the solution and not the problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Barry Roger, 303 Snake Meadow Road, South Killenly. Just to summarize the situation for anybody who hasn't gone through this process with us. 2018, we discovered we had some sinkholes in the dam, and we've had an engineer working on that. And we've invested over $100,000 with that engineer in studies and design work. Last year, I think it was September 1st, Tropical Storm Ida came through this area, dumped a lot of rain into the watershed that fills that pond at camp, and a heavy flow came over the spillway, and the spillway fills, goes into the brook that runs along the bottom of the dam, and it washed a lot of that soil out of the toe of the dam. So that became the most immediate problem that we have with the dam. And so we're trying to move forward to repair the Tropical Storm Ida damages. And that is estimated in the neighborhood of $100,000. We'll have some setup fees to do that. We'll have to repair the fences and stuff along the dam as well. But right now, it is estimated at $100,000. Hopefully, it can get out to bid through the winter, and the actual construction should not take too long, hopefully before, in the springtime before camp this year.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Kenny Smith. I live on 91 Merrill Street in Danison, Killenly, Connecticut. I am a student at Killenly High School and the camp is in the middle of the camp. And the pond is a very central part of the camp and all of its activities. I learned how to swim and kayak from there, and I made a lot of friends along the way. So I'm really hoping that you can use your funds to help repair the dam and save the pond so many other kids can experience the pond memories that I was able to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to any of the items for public hearing?
If I may, with regards to public hearing, I know that some of our first responders had wanted to come and express with regards to the emergency response one. However, they're all been reported to a structure fire that's in the lower part of Danielson right now. So that's why we're not really seeing any of their respondents. But they did submit public comment last month that you have on record in support of that item. So I just request on their behalf that the council consider their previously submitted public comment. And unfortunately, they were unable to make tonight's meeting simply because they were literally, you know, just recently called out to a structure fire.
Completely understandable. Would anyone else like to make comment? Last call for public comment before we close the hearing. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and it is 7:08 PM. Now we'll move on in the town council agenda. Meeting has been called to order. Mr. Wood?
Glad they do this now. Heavenly Father, again, we seek your wisdom and your guidance. We also pray that you would give us a spirit of unity, that we would serve the people of this great town well and honor you in doing all of this. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. He's not being very successful. We've tried to send him a link.
For roll call purposes, all council members are in attendance except for Mr. Wood, who is trying to join us remotely.
No, Whitehead.
Excuse me, Mr. Whitehead, who's trying to join us remotely.
Correct letter.
They both sit over there. Next item up on the agenda is item 5, Adoption of Minutes of Previous Meetings. 5A, Special Town Council Meeting, September 6, 2022. And 5B, Regular Town Council Meeting, September 13, 2022. Can I get a motion to adopt these?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandelsky, seconded by Mr. Wood. Any comments, corrections?
I did find one missed date in here on page 5. The middle of the page under Agenda, it says the meeting was held on Tuesday, March 8, 2022. That should be September 13, I think.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other corrections, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item up.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add an item to the agenda. This is an appropriate time to add it for item 15D for the Town Manager's Review under New Business. Make that motion.
Alright, we've got a motion to add item 15D.
Second.
Review of Town Manager's Evaluation. And we have a motion made by Mr. Grant... Mr. Kattula.
You're doing great today.
No, not.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. George. Now, we need a two-thirds vote to add an item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item 5D, or excuse me, 15D is now added into the agenda. Trying to cut back. Alright, Kevin, you're up reading. We'll now move on to item 6, Presentations, Proclamations, Declarations, and Mr. Kattula will read them off tonight.
Proclamation recognizing October 2022 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas breast cancer is the second most diagnosed form of cancer for women in the United States and is expected to be detected in one out of eight women in America every year. And whereas early detection is vital to ensure the most effective diagnosis and treatment possible and can save lives. And whereas it is vital to meet with your physician and discuss your individual risk, family history, other common risk factors, preventative care, and regular screenings. And whereas researchers, scientists, numerous non-profit organizations, and breast cancer survivors are dedicated to discovering the cure for breast cancer and providing education about breast cancer. Today, the five-year survival rate is 90%. And whereas all breast cancer survivors should be recognized for their determination and courage and acknowledge that these survivors give us hope for a better future for those affected by this disease. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Town Council of the Town of Killenly that the month of October hereby be recognized as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And be it further proclaimed that all citizens learn the facts about breast cancer and along with participating in a healthy lifestyle, obtain regular breast cancer screenings. Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson, Chairman.
Doing them all?
You can do the first two.
Proclamation recognizing October 2022 as National Bully Prevention Month. Whereas bullying is a physical, verbal, sexual, and emotional harm or intimidation intentionally directed at a person or a group of people. And whereas bullying occurs in schools, playgrounds, neighborhoods, and through technologies such as the internet and cellphones, often referred to as cyberbullying. And whereas according to national statistics, 28% of students in grades 6 through 12 experience bullying. A higher percentage of male students are physically bullied, where female students have the higher percentage of being subjected to rumors and exclusion from activities. 70.6% of young people have witnessed bullying. 16% of high school students were electronically bullied in the last year. And 55.2% of LGBTQ students experience cyberbullying. And 10% of the dropout student rate is due to repetitive bullying. And whereas targets of bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional, and learning problems. And students who are repeatedly bullied often fear such activities like riding the bus, going to school, and attending community events. And whereas children who bully are at greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors in contrast to the children who witness bullying often less, feel less secure, and are more fearful and are intimidated. And whereas National Bully Prevention Awareness Month is a month-long observance to educate and raise awareness about bullying, creating a safe, supportive learning environment, talk about bullying at home, supporting your community, and by asking for help. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Town Council of the Town of Killenly that the month of October hereby be recognized as National Bully Prevention Month, which further commits to support the safety of the children of our community. Be it further proclaimed that all citizens are encouraged to unite against bullying and to share the message that no one should be bullied. Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Kattula. Next up, item 6C, Proclamation recognizing October 2022 as Down Syndrome Awareness Month. Whereas Down Syndrome is the most common chromosomal disorder which provides... Which provides an array of challenges, health, and growth concerns including delayed language and developmental skills. Down Syndrome occurs when a baby receives a full or partial extra copy of chromosome 21. And whereas approximately one in every 7,000 babies are born with Down Syndrome, representing an estimated 6,000 births per year in the United States. There are over 400,000 individuals living with Down Syndrome in the United States. Life expectancy has increased dramatically in recent decades, ranging from age 25 in 1983 to reaching the age of 60 as of today. And whereas possessing a wide range of abilities, individuals with Down Syndrome attend school, work, participate in decisions that affect them, have meaningful relationships, vote and contribute to society and their communities in many wonderful ways. And whereas individuals with Down Syndrome should have equal opportunity to achieve the universal desired goals of self-fulfillment, pride in their achievements, inclusion in their community, and reaching their fullest potential. And whereas quality educational programs, a stimulating home environment, good healthcare, and positive support from family, friends, and the community enable people with Down Syndrome to lead fulfilling and productive lives. And now therefore be it proclaimed by the Town Council of the Town of Killenly that the month of October hereby be recognized as Down Syndrome Awareness Month. And be it further proclaimed the Killenly Town Council supports and encourages meaningful participation of people with Down Syndrome in all aspects in society during Down Syndrome Awareness Month and throughout the year. Jason Anderson, Town Council Chairman, dated at Killenly, Connecticut, this 11th day of October, 2022. Item 6D, Proclamation recognizing October 2022 as Fire Prevention Month. Whereas Fire Prevention Month is observed each year during the week of October 9 in tribute to the Great Chicago Fire, which began October 8, 1871, causing devastating damage, homelessness, and left a city in mourning. And whereas in 1911, the 40th anniversary of the Great Chicago Fire, the Fire Marshals Association of North America determined that the anniversary be observed in ways to keep the public informed about the importance of fire prevention, specifically designating the week of October 9 as that is when most of the devastation had occurred. In 1920, Woodrow Wilson signed the proclamation for the first fire preventive day, and in 1925, President Calvin Coolidge proclaimed Fire Prevention Week to be a national observance. And whereas in the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme is "Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape", the importance of planning your escape in case of a fire is not just for schools, but for the entire community. Residents should take precautions such as installing new smoke and CO2 alarms, routinely check batteries in existing alarms, have a fire extinguisher on hand, and have fire drills. These are all proactive safety measures that can increase fire safety. And whereas Killenly's fire departments and first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and injuries through prevention, education. And where, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Town Council of the Town of Killenly that the month of October hereby be recognized as Fire Prevention Month. We urge our residents to plan and participate, plan and practice your escape plan as well as utilizing everyday fire prevention for your safety. Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson, Chairman, dated at Killenly, Connecticut, this 11th day of October, 2022.
I'd just like to take a minute to thank all our first responders for their, all their hours of volunteerism and the sacrifices they did make for the town.
I agree. Next item up on the agenda, item 7, Unfinished Business for Town Meeting Action, and we have none for that. So we'll now move on to item 8, Citizens' Statements and Petitions. Ms. Gloria, did we have anything submitted?
We did not receive any submitted by email.
Thank you. If anyone would like to come and speak regarding anything, it doesn't have to be on the agenda. It doesn't have to be from the public hearing. You're welcome to come up to the podium and just state your name and address.
Good evening, Donna Bromwell. Live up on Bailey Hill Road in East Killenly. Got a couple items here. As many of you know, I've been Chair of Conservation Commission for over 20 years. And got a couple items. One, we on Conservation have every year a October event, and this year it was scheduled for Let's Build Avenue property. It's been changed, and Mary's gonna speak more to that. One thing that I would like to be sure to comment on is one of our conservation people, Jeanie Malfred, took a lot of energy and initiative and action at that Let's Build property, designing trails and moving trees and doing all kinds of stuff. She also works for Lowe's, and they volunteered to help to build the kiosk and do some other activities over there. Another thing that happened to this is the community projects, not only Conservation or not only Jeanie. The Girl Scouts were up there and volunteered sometime in cleanup. So we're gonna have our walk this year instead at our Quanda property, which is up in, East Killenly, up near the transfer station. It'll be the same date, October 29. Everybody's welcome, of course. Couple of just items of note. As many of you know, I've done some backroads bus tours now and again that have become very well received. I haven't done any lately, but plan to. But through that, my reputation gets around, I guess. On Friday, I was asked by the Westview Commons up there, the senior living center, Jeanie, would you do a bus tour for us? And I said, sure, why not? You know, that'll be fun. So we did, and I took them out around the backroads. That was very well received, too. Another little item, just of interest, the American chestnut tree, as many of you know, had a blight, and many of the big old chestnut trees died early 1900s. And so that was too bad. There was a lot of history in American chestnut. A lot of mills were built of it, a lot of it was sent over to England during the Revolutionary War. I guess people all the different wood and stuff. But our American chestnut trees died due to this blight. And I got a call not too long ago from the Conservation Commission in Plainfield, and they said, they do know that you have an American chestnut tree up at the Killenly High School. And he said that he was up there, and it looked like American chestnut. So he took a sample of it, and he sent it to the American chestnut experts. And indeed, it is an American chestnut. I knew of some sprouting of these things. There is one real American chestnut tree that, oh, of 101. And the seeds and the nuts were taken up to the BOAG Center, and they sprouted them. And apparently, they planted one right on the driveway going up to the high school, which is cool. I also know a friend of ours who got two of those samples. And they're like this tall, and they're sprouting, and they have flowers, and they have nuts, too. So some genuine American chestnut trees do exist. I always thought that maybe the, well, blight was in the ground, but it's not, it's in the air. So if they're close to other trees that have the blight, you know, they go back to heaven in the driveway. I was so excited when we first moved out there. And I thought, yeah, that's a chestnut tree. And I sent it to the chestnut experts. They said, yes, indeed, it was. And I went, ours is gonna last. That'll be so cool. And it got to be like, like, it's tall. Every year I watch it. One year the sprouts came up. Yep, yep, yep. And then I went, and that was the end of that. So we cut it, and I saved it. I finally burned it, because I couldn't figure out a way to use it. So anyhow, American chestnuts are alive and well. Actually, down in Plainfield, too, the Conservation Commission down there planted some seedlings a while back. And I guess they're, they're well. Another thing I came across of interest, the Slater Experience. Now, this is the new museum up in Webster, Massachusetts. And I happened to go there after I walked over a dent, and it is phenomenal. Slater Experience in Webster... Webster, yeah. Mass, Webster, Mass, yeah. I'm a little blind. And absolutely built there. It's, I've been, we've traveled a lot and been to a lot of visitor centers and a lot of museums and everything. And this one totally blew me away. It's only been open about six months, and it talks about the mill, development of the mills up in Webster. And it's got holographic images and action, things that you can touch and become involved in. I mean, I was so excited about it. And even though I didn't see it. So, but it reminded me, as I've mentioned a lot of many times, that we need a mill museum here in Killenly. That's what our town is built on in the 1800s, was mills down the Westfield Brook. There are many of 15 that were on the Westfield Brook. One of my backroads tours, actually, I do a mill tour to point out all the, you know, the foundations and the history and all that good stuff. We don't have any kind of mill museum here in town. We should, I'm gonna promote it, I don't know. But anyway, it's another thing that we really need. It would be a great economic development, bring people to town, and also highlight our foundations of those. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Last call for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on on the agenda. Next item up is Council and Staff Comments. Ms. Gloria, in regards to a mill museum, would there be any space for that in the Westfield Ave Community Center project? Or is all that space in there already?
Yeah, we wouldn't have any space in that, in that building for a mill museum. Wouldn't be adequate space for that.
Okay.
Maybe that's something that we could work in tandem with our historical society in trying to determine if that's a feature that they can add in some of theirs. And just trying to figure out what partnerships we might be able to leverage best that might have those resources that could add to that. But yeah, as far as that facility, there wouldn't be space to accommodate that. But maybe there's another way that we could accomplish something for that in a different way.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on on the agenda. Next item up is Appointments to Boards and Commissions. 10A, Andrew Farner is seeking reappointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals. As a regular member, his term would run from February 1, 2022 through January 31, 2027. Mr. Farmer's attendance over the course of his appointment with the Zoning Board of Appeals has been consistent with minimal absenteeism. Since 2021, he has been at six of six meetings. Currently, the Zoning Board of Appeals has one regular member vacancy and three alternate member vacancies. Can I get a motion to reappoint Mr. Farner?
I'll make that motion.
Motion has been made by Mr. Kattula, seconded by Ms. Barclay. Discussion.
I am the liaison for this commission[1670.46]
I am the liaison for this commission and the board of appeals, and I'd say he is very consistent in his attendance. He is the chairman, and he does a great job of, and actually, that's a really great group, too. So I definitely would support his reappointment.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I haven't attended any of the meetings, but I've watched them on YouTube or whatever stream, they stream them on there, and I think he does a very good job on there, so I'd be in all favor of reappointing.
Thank you. Any further comments? Mr. Whitehead, any comments?
No, sir.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Next item up is ten B. Brian Brier is seeking appointment to the Water Pollution Control Authority. There are currently one regular member and two alternate member vacancies available. The regular term runs for three years. Available term would run as follows, from November 1st, 2022 through October 31st, 2025. The alternate terms run for two years. Both terms would run November 1st, 2022 through October 31st, 2024. He is, Mr. Brier is seeking appointment as a regular member. Can I get a motion to appoint Mr. Brier?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Kertula, seconded by Mr. Grandalsky. Discussion.
I'd be in favor because he's, as he told us, he was a plumber. He has a little bit of history with sewers, and I found it interesting that he actually applied through an ad. So our ads are being read, and people are, it takes a little time, but just don't give up with the ads.
On behalf of the council, I definitely want to thank all our volunteers for all our boards and commissions, especially the ones that seek reappointment. It shows to go, goes to show a dedication to this town. Any other comments?
On the sewer authority, just a short, couple of months ago, they were just barely making their quorum. You know, that's all they had. If one person was out, they couldn't do it. So now we have two, two additional regular members, so that's a big, big plus. So it gives them a little bit of leeway if someone can't make the meeting, because that place has to run. We can't shut that down. And so it's nice to have, you know, all the regular member positions filled.
Yeah. The next ones we got to fill are inland wetlands water course.
Hopefully, next month, you'll have an interview for that.
Okay. That would be great.
He wasn't unable to make this past month.
Any further comments? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Next item up is reports from liaisons, board of ed liaison. I do not see. Moving on, we'll move on to item eleven B, borough council liaison.
So the Borough had its first regular meeting. We, we had discussed a little bit of our strategic planning session that we had had. Came up with some real good focus on how to kind of market the borough, you know, just kind of letting, not letting it get lost in with the town's branding, but kind of trying to find a way to kind of mesh in. We, we talked about, they have money that's available for facade improvements, that we're currently working on a website update. That was part, some of the money that we, of the ARPA funds that were allocated to the borough are going to be used for that. The, we got to see the new audio visual package in the setup that we have, that was some of the ARPA funds, and we actually got to use it when we did our strategic planning. There's a fire truck committee that's looking at preliminary designs for trucks and making recommendations, because they're looking to replace some of their equipment that's getting older. One of their really old trucks was actually, there was a fire, a fire truck museum, and I believe it's Mass, that was interested in it and took, because I guess it's like one of these rare, very few made ones, and so it's been put out on loan. So other people, other than people in Killenley, could actually see some of it. We did some reappointments for our representative to the Northeast District Department of Health. We looked, we've been, we started some more discussions on our live streaming policies. We're going to kind of do what Killenley does, and we're going to, rather than reinvent the wheel, we're going to look at what the town does so that we can do the same thing. And they were talking about consolidating some of their voting with the town, and we're going to be this, in the next, next couple of months, start working on charter revision for the borough, because just like the town, everything's got to get updated. And our next meeting will be October the nineteenth at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Any questions from council members? Okay.
Just a quick comment. You know, one thing that, you know, you had mentioned about people understanding the borough versus the town, things like that. I had taken a phone call this, earlier this month there, from a gentleman who didn't even know that the Borough Council existed. So, you know, it was an interesting conversation, and that wasn't even the reason for the conversation, but I'm hoping that that will help people have some more awareness to the Borough Council and what you guys, what they do as well, so.
Yeah, we're definitely working on trying to, our social, our social media, and I mean, that's where everybody seems to be hanging out, is on social media, so we just got to move forward out of the eighteen hundreds and pass the nineteenth and just jump right into the two thousands, and we'll be okay.
Anything further? Thank you very much. We will now move on in the agenda. Next item up is item twelve, discussion and acceptance of monthly budget reports. Twelve A, summary report on general fund appropriations for town government. Can I get a motion to accept this?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandalsky, seconded by Mr. Wood. Discussion, comments?
I have a quick question. The page three, under the licenses of permits, has been a, appears to be quite a large increase there already. Is that all for permits and building or such?
Yeah, that's all building permits. So we've had, I think that's some of our Frito, is that Frito-Lay?
Um, was that one for Frito-Lay?
Yeah. That was a Frito-Lay expansion permit that came in. So again, because it's kind of that one-time thing, that's not something we necessarily budget that high spike number for.
Thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Grandalsky?
On the, on page five, our legal services, they're almost forty percent. Is there any that's kind of a little bit ahead of schedule? Is that anything that we should be worried about, that we've got stuff going on?
I think that is relating to the invoices for, with regards to the DAVCO trial that we just went through. We had a trial over the summer for Eleven Maple Street. So we did have some legal costs incurred with regards to that case. But other than that, where everything else is trending pretty, pretty normal with regards to our legal. So I wouldn't expect to see that number, that trend to continue in escalation.
Is DAVCO resolved, or we still?
We're waiting for the judges, the judge still has to opine.
Because it's ironic, because today, three people were asking me about what's going on down there.
Yeah, they had to, both parties had to submit summary briefs, and then the judge has to opine. So we're waiting for the judge's decision.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further? Seeing no further comments. Mr. Whitehead, did you have any comments?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of accepting, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. We'll now move on to item twelve B, discussion and acceptance of monthly budget reports, system object based on adjusted budget for the Board of Education. Can I get a motion to accept this?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Kertula. Discussion.
I have a, I have a question. So this question was brought forward during the budget negotiations about other objects. So on page five, the KPS system objects, they have other objects budgeted, one hundred and ten thousand plus. And then on the explanation, they have encumbrances, requisitions, and expenditures, but we really don't know what those are. And there's been no clarification of anything that we've asked for.
I can mention that tomorrow night at the meeting, when I give my report.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, abstentions? We have one abstention. Motion carries. Ms. Barclay. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is thirteen, correspondence communications reports. Thirteen A is town manager report. Ms. Calorio, if you could.
So just to bring everyone on the update with regards to drought conditions, so we are still classified in a stage zero drought, which, which still means that we are in drought conditions. We're just abnormally dry at this point. But as I explained last time, I continue to monitor what the conditions are surrounding us, because that also drives us. So the surrounding areas around us that were in stage two and three are now dropping to stage one and stage two. So we are starting to see that there's recovery around us, which is all good news. I continue to monitor that, and I have the link there for where those updates can be found. With regards to the Litchfield Avenue property, as Donna mentioned in public comment, so the Litchfield Avenue property, these are actually two parcels of land that the town owns along Litchfield Avenue between the roadway and the river. We acquired them really at two very different times. One of the Conservation Commission members, Jean, has spent a lot of time working in creating trails along, a walking path, walking trails along that property. She did engage with the, and had the Girl Scout troop came out and did help to do some cleanup, and Lowe's has offered to build a kiosk for that location. There is some areas, and I've given you a map, and I've circled on the, on the map that just has the green and the yellow. I've circled some areas in red, that's really where the trail that she has created is about point nine miles, so just under a mile long. It comes in, if you're at the, if you're at the fire school, fire academy, if you're at the school, the driveway, almost directly across from that driveway is the entrance to where this walking path starts. And it really goes directly down, straight, straight down to where the river is, and then parallels the river for a good, good bit of the time, and then it begins a loop process where it, the northern portion of the parcel is a bit wider and a flatter portion of parcel. It's also a much wetter parcel. It has a lot of wetlands through there, but it widens out, and she created a loop factor that loops back around so somebody could loop back. And then it's an easy egress back out to the parcel. One of the challenges that she's run into and is a, is a considerable issue with the site at this point is along where the trail is closest to the roadway, where the guide rails are, it's actually a significant difference in height from the roadway, there's a lot of debris, household trash, that has been dumped and accumulated down there over time. She had, the Girl Scouts did attempt to assist her in cleaning up. One of the things that's down there that is very difficult, that they had to kind of back away from their cleanup efforts, is there's a lot of glass, there's a lot of broken glass out there. So my staff kind of alerted me to this. Jean had had concerns about this as well when she was going through the process of the creation of that trail. So I started walking it, I walked it twice with, once with staff, once with Jean and one of our staff members to go out there and really just look at the conditions of it, to determine from a public standpoint, from the town's liability standpoint, where do we need to be in order to allow this to be open for the public to access it as a recreational trail facility? And where's the town's liability concerns with that? So those circled areas are, are high concern areas. I did include a few pictures. The pictures are difficult to see in that a lot of the debris is really under a layer of, you know, leaves and dirt, you know? This has been accumulating over time, and I've talked to a number of community members that have said, oh, we went down there, you know, so many years ago and pulled out, you know, truckloads of trash that was over there. So I, I had our engineering staff go out there and take a look at some of those areas, especially where the, where the pathway, where the walking pathway actually traverses over where this debris is, where you actually would be walking over that space, because I don't want to have voids occur where people could fall through a void or something like that, or, you know, just, we really need to have that addressed. So I had engineering go out and take a look at it. They did see where there were areas that there are in the, in the hillside, because it's really the, the embankment. It's kind of created an embankment right there. It actually has voids in it. You can see pretty significant voids where, you know, the debris has just piled up, and some of it has decayed and other parts of it hasn't, hasn't yet decayed. We did find, there's a fifty-five gallon drum out there that's clearly deteriorated. We have not tried to excavate it, so it's unclear as to whether or not there's still anything remaining in it. But we would need to do soil sampling to determine what is impacted from that. So in looking at all this with our engineering department, we really would need to, to continue to pursue, we really need to, need to do a phase one, phase two evaluation. We need to do some, some testing, soil sampling and testing. I think, you know, Jean, she did an amazing job on creating the trails that she has created through there, and really where it is right now, it's really beyond an individual's capability of removing that material. It just is. All of this has been there for, you know, a long period of time. You know, there's a lot of vegetation that has grown up and through a lot of it, but it doesn't make it any less of a, of a, of a, of a public safety problem or a liability to the town by opening it up to the public for, for walking trails. So we need to address the problem if we really want to open it up for walking trails. But that's going to cost money in order for us to do those evaluations. So I have engineering pulling together what those costs might look like, and I'll have to come to fiscal subcommittee to determine how that gets paid for. I am reviewing whether or not some of that can get paid for out of open space trust fund, because this is open space land, and whether or not open space can, you know, assist in paying for some of those evaluations of their, of the land. But that's got to be reviewed. Another thing that I found in the evaluation of this land, one of the parcels, there was a school. It was given to the town for the construction of a school. That's why the town received the parcel, was for the construction of a school. There is, the Conservation Group did find the old foundation from the school, because the school burnt down many, many, many moons ago, the school burnt down. The deed appears to have a reverter clause in it. So I need to, before we continue to put on and create recreational use of a property, I need to clear up that title component as well, to make sure that we aren't exposing inadvertently another liability that's out there. So there's a, there's a number of factors that are going on with this one. The reason I moved the, the Walktober event to the Quandah one was really with regards to the amount of debris and the amount of, the amount of broken glass that's down there. It wouldn't be suitable for public, especially with Walktober, you're really bringing, it's a, it's a, you know, think of it as a tourist-related thing. We're attracting people to come and look at us. It's a showcase for us, and you don't want to use that as a, you know, Jean's worked so hard on this. I wouldn't want people to come and walk through that one section and take one picture of a half-degraded fifty-five gallon drum and be like, oh, this is the best, you know what I mean? Because that's not what, what this really is, you know? And I think we just need to figure out what our next path and direction is with this trail. She has done a huge amount of work on this, what makes sense to move forward with. So I'll be coming forward to the fiscal subcommittee with a direction and path as to what will it mean, what, what kind of sampling will we have to do? It's one of those things. We won't have a number for cleanup until we're well into this. One of the challenges that this property is going to present to us with cleanup is we have the river on one side, and we have a road at the top. and we have a road at the top. We are literally excavating in the middle of that. So we have to maintain the integrity of the road at the top, and we have to make sure that nothing gets into the river below, right? So that is, that's going to be a challenge, and that's going to add additional expense, because none of this is easily grabbed, if you will, from like the roadway. It would also require a fair amount of vegetation removal in order to be able to pull some of that material out as well. So we would have to engage in the wetlands in that conversation. And so there's a number of factors that has to play into this. I wish there was an easy button on it, but it's it's just, there's a lot of factors, and I think Jean has done absolutely everything humanly possible for one person to be able to pull together. But there's a few more factors that have to come into play on this one. So that's the Litchfield Avenue property, kind of in a nutshell, and, you know, I'm really thankful that the Conservation Commission is able to, Conservation Group is able to really pivot quickly to the Quandok property for our Walktober event. It is a registration event, so we are taking registrations for that.
Yeah.
On the webs, on Last Green Valley, they have it as to register.
Litchfield was, Quandok is not.
Right, but they, we have the link for registration. So if somebody goes to register for Litchfield, they'll have, they'll get directed to Quandok. We're also going to have a sign put up at Litchfield. That way, if somebody just shows up, they know it's over at Quandok, right? So we want to make sure that we divert the people that assume they were going to Litchfield, make sure that they get over to the right event, right? So we're trying to make sure we get the pathway over. Street scan, as all of you are aware, we had, the town had performed a road scan with using street scan back in 2017 to really get a and kind of scientific evaluation of how the condition of our roads were and the rating of that roads. Individually, our highway director and one of our engineering technicians has been kind of updating the information that we have based on the based on the updates that we have. But we wanted, as we're getting ready to platform into a really significant investment with the with the $2.5 million going into our roads in the upcoming construction cycle, we really wanted to get a new gauge. There's been a lot of utility work that's taken place on our roads, which means there's been a lot of pavement that's taken place on roads, as well as our own pavement that we that we've done. So we wanted to get a reset on what that scan actually looked like. So we had Street Scan come in and do an update for the for the roads. So I had a picture of what the vehicle actually looked like. It's pretty cool. The whole backseat was nothing but servers. That's what the whole backseat was. He drove every road in, every town road in Killingley twice. It took him three days. He wasn't allowed to leave Killingley until the home office said that all the roads showed up in their GP, in the the GPS. So he kind of had to camp out for a little while to make sure that everything pinged, and they didn't tell him, because there was one, one road up in the up in East Killingley, because there are some times that you have, we have little spots in certain places. There was one road in East Killingley, I think he had to drive five times in order for the signal to get to get to them. But they got it there. So we're waiting for that data to get back to us, so that way we can see where we were. And I think this is really going to be a good, it's going to be a great tool for two reasons. One, it'll give us that fresh foundation base for Matt in creating the construction plans for next year and platforming. We already have a pretty, you know, he has a pretty good idea of where he wants to go, but this may pivot some of those, depending on what grades some of those roads come back at, right? He may decide to pivot. But also, you know, him, Matt and Alec really have been working on trying to update some of those grading informations in the interim period and kind of fine-tune those grades as we go along. This will really tell them how close they were on understanding how they were with coming up with those grading factors. So that's a really key thing for the street scan. So we're excited to have that information coming in. Killingley Memorial renovation project, we just, I gave you the some of the, I didn't give you all of the presentation, but I gave you some of the presentation that was given to both the Board of Ed and the Permanent Building Commission with regards to the plan documents, as well as the budget for the renovation project. It was presented, both bodies signed off on the design and budget presentation. They supported option, for the budget, they supported option A, which was essentially the full amount of the kitchen equipment is going, the Board of Ed is going to alternatively fund that. And then the only reduction that we had to do to the project to keep it within budget was we reduced the amount that we were holding for design and estimating contingencies. We're at the end of the design phase at this point in time, and we're at the end of the estimating period. This package is ready to go out to bid. So they held our, what's called the PCR review meeting with the Office of School Construction. If, once we hear that, so they received all these documents, we'll review them. Our hope is that within a week, we will get the authorization from Office of School Construction to go out to bid. Once we get that, once Downs Construction, once the project gets the authorization to go out to bid, the bids will hit the streets within 48 hours, and we'll be out to bid on the project. And we'll be getting bids back by beginning to middle of November. So we're in pretty good shape with the with the Memorial School project. Just to let you all know, I was asked by a homeschool group to just do a presentation on what is local government? What does that even mean? What does it mean to be a town manager? So it was really great. I got to meet with them on the 29th. I did a really short PowerPoint, but just had a great time talking to the kids and just, they got, they asked all sorts of questions. It was great. Parents asked questions. So we are, I'm following that up with tours of all of our, all of our facilities. So once a month, the group is going to come to a different facility and kind of do a more in-depth dive. So the first one, I think that we're going to have them come to is either here or the library. But when they come here, they're going to come through all of the town, all of the offices, and we might have them stop here and try and do like a little mock debate kind of thing here, just to get a feeling of what that looks like, what does it mean? But, you know, have them go to the highway garage, they'll go to the library, they'll come here, and we'll have them do a stop at the wastewater treatment facility. Yep. So it's great. We need our chemists. So, so, yeah. So I think it's great that we have, they were really engaged. I think I had probably 20, 25 kids in the group, and they pretty much ranged from probably seven to 12 or 13, 14, maybe. So it was, it was a great group, really, really great group. So another, just an update on Westfield Avenue, we've started, we did the initial project kickoff meeting on September 9th. The design team is now meeting with each of the major stakeholders, is what I would put that categorize it, to really go over program needs. And so this is really a selective renovation, right? So not every space is getting renovated, but we need to still meet with every stakeholder, because we need to understand how everybody is using each of the spaces, so we can plan our construction schedule, and so we can also plan, you know, if we decide to do something with a space, what's the ripple effect to that, right? And so one of the things that we're running into is storage. Storage is becoming a major concern, because the Board of the Board of Education has utilized that facility for storage for basically the entire district. And the town, you know, the community center has a lot of stuff in it for storage. So, you know, everybody, it's like when you're moving your house. You have to go through all your closets to figure out what you really want to pack and move. But with that, there are some things that have to pack and move, and we have to figure out where all needs to live, right? And so maintenance equipment is definitely something that we have to figure out a home for. And, you know, whether the board needs to have facilities that are closer to their other facilities that they need to maintain, if the town is taking over the maintenance of Westfield Avenue. But likewise, the town will need to have storage capabilities near Westfield Avenue to store our maintenance stuff as well. So we have to juggle that. So right now, we're just going through those in-depth investigate, we're doing, going through those evaluations. The design and construction teams, they were on-site yesterday to do a very in-depth investigation specifically targeted around the brick veneer. I will say that the team is, we really want to get a good handle on where that brick veneer is, and the extent of the delamination of that. There is concerns that it may have, it may be more extensive. So we really want to get our arms wrapped around that so we can understand, because that's really going to, you know, that's, that's going to be a driving cost, right? And we need to get the envelope fixed and repaired, and then we work on the inner parts, right? So that's going to be a major component. And then lastly, I did give you some of the meetings that I had attended. And then attached is just a bunch of the information with regards to the Litchfield Avenue, and then the information on the KMS project. And then the last item under communications, I did include for you, the communications from the Economic Development Commission. It's their annual report that was prepared by the Economic Development Director and reviewed by the Economic Development Commission.
Thank you. I have a few questions. As far as the reverter clause that's in that deed, if the property were to revert to the previous owner, would the town be liable for any cleanup on that property?
That's, that's a legal question, and I haven't reviewed that all with legal yet. So I will have to wait and have to get that response back to you after I've had a chance to review it with legal.
Okay. Now, I know you had mentioned the KMS project, the ribbon cutting that is still set for next Friday, 9:30 a.m.?
I believe so. I'd have to go back and look at my, I don't have it off the top of my head. So I can email that to all of you.
Okay.
I think so. For the KMS project, yes.
Yes, for the KMS.
KMS 9:30, yes. KMS is 9:30 at, on the, it's the groundbreaking, yes. He threw me with ribbon cutting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Groundbreaking. So, yes, that is October 21st, 9:30 at KMS. So if any of you are able to attend, if you can just give me the heads up that you're going to be able to be there, clearly looking for one of you to be able to speak. So you are going to be able to speak, okay.
Now, I do have one question. As far as the, when you met with the homeschool students and their parents, did you try recruiting any of the parents to serve on boards and commissions?
I always mention that we have lots of boards and commissions available, open. I, I always mention that that's a great way to be involved.
And now that they can attend these meetings remotely, if they have kids at home and can't leave them at home, they can attend the meetings at home?
Could be.
And I believe Mr. Grandowski had something.
Getting back to Litchfield Avenue.
Yeah.
And you're talking about a phase one and a phase two. Who physically does that? Do we have to go out for someone to do that, or?
Yeah, we would hire consultants to come in and do the phase one and the phase two. And the phase, so the phase one is really just a cursory review to try and determine what would potentially be on the site. The phase two is really where we start doing more in-depth sampling and things like that. None of that gets us to cleanup. It really kind of starts to fill in the picture of what is potentially there and starts to map it out. Phase three gets us a better map as to what it will cost. But, so phase one, we already kind of know what's going to happen with a phase one, right? We already, we already know that there's stuff out there, right? And a phase one will go through the deeds and the records and stuff like that. The phase two will start to identify the extent of what is potentially out there, and we'll do some testing around it. Phase three will help us, will, so phase two will help us determine what we're going to need to do for a phase three. So the phase three is going to give us more in-depth testing and a bigger, a more in-depth plan for the actual removal of material and give us an understanding of, hopefully, quantity. But again, it's, it's, it's difficult to really come up with what all that is, because once you're into it, once you start pulling the material out, we're in it all the way. We have to remove it. Once, once we're there, we own it. We have to take it out. We can't go, we took three scoops out, and now maybe we're just going to walk away, right? Now we're in it. So the phase one and phase two will be the initial review to really give us an understanding and a picture, and what are the alternative, what are our alternatives around this? I think that's the best way to explore what the impacts are for this property.
So for a phase one, pretty much, there's not a lot of cost outside of staff?
Yeah, so phase one is really, we would still hire out the phase one. Phase one is probably going to be under $5,000. A phase two is going to be probably somewhere in the range of between $35,000 to $50,000. That's what we've been seeing for average cost for phase, phase twos coming in at. That's because there's soil testing and boring that takes place with a phase two. So that, but that gives you a better picture as to, you know, what you're potentially looking at, and gives you a better understanding of, you know, hazardous versus not, you know, non-hazardous debris that's out there. So we're likely looking at for a phase one and a phase two, probably somewhere around the 50,000 mark. But again, I need to get those numbers. I want to bring that to the fiscal subcommittee to evaluate what would be a potential funding source for that. I need to, I need to work with legal on, with regards to the title itself, in determining, you know, what our course of action is around that, and if it's something we can work simultaneously as we look at these, you know, phases, as we look at doing the environmental, environmental phase reviews.
So pretty much, phase one, we could absorb within the budget this year?
Sure. I mean, we could probably look at doing that within a professional services budget. I'd have to go through our budgets and see, you know, if that's.
But phase two, now we're getting it some serious. That would be, that's something we'd have to throw into next year's budget or, because it's starting to get.
Yeah, so a phase one is only valid for a certain period of time. It's not, once you do a phase one, it's not good for forever. It's only good for a short period of time. And I want to say it's good for only like maybe six months. And then, and then you have to have it updated in order for you to move on to a phase two. So you would want to time it appropriately. But that's where, you know, I want to be able to sit down and really look at, you know, is, is there alternative? I want to look, I need to sit down with the finance director and really look through what are potential funding options for a phase two, for a phase one and a phase two on this property, and then bring that to fiscal for you guys to evaluate what makes sense.
What happens if nothing is done? What, what?
Then it doesn't, then we, then we obviously wouldn't be able to open it to the public. We would have to just leave it as open space. That's, you know, if ultimately the town decide, the council or the town decides that the investment in this is, is too high at this point, then we would just not continue with the trails, and it would have to be left as just straight open space, because you wouldn't be able to disturb the location of where that material is. So you would not, you want to make sure that people aren't going in there and, you know, being able to access that, that space.
Well, I cleaned a lot of that up 30 years ago.
You told me that.
Got paid by Ryerson Corporation to take, we took three dump truck loads of debris out of there. And everybody, you know, whatever, the town took it up to the landfill, and there's a lot of things that, there's a lot of players. Everybody got together.
Sure.
It was a good endeavor and whatnot. But it seems like it's been a dumping place ever since I can remember. And it just, it's never stopping. I, I.
Yeah, so.
Is there anything else, you know, maybe in the meantime, we've got to do something else to be more aware, or?
Yeah.
How do we do something to stop or slow it? Well, we don't want to, I don't, I don't want to say slow it down. We got to stop.
Stop it, yeah, stop it. And, and so to be, to be, to be honest, you know, Jean had mentioned to me that when she first started this endeavor, she did notice several people pulled up on she first started this endeavor, she did notice several people pulled up on the side of the road and hoisted bags over the side of the guide rails as she was out there, and she ran up to the road, and, and they came back and got them, you know, and, and she got them to take them away. But I will say, in having been out there now a couple of times, the debris that's out there doesn't appear to be very fresh, meaning that I don't think that we have real active dumping that's occurring right now. I think that a lot of it has been there for a good period of time. I think what was cleaned up that was more active was already cleaned up by, by Jean and by the Girl Scouts. I think they did a lot of that surface cleanup. The stuff that's left is really, I mean, we're talking stuff that's under, that's under a layer of leaves, that vegetation has grown over, right? So, it's, it's, it's been out there for a little bit of time. And trying to get it out is gonna mean that we're literally ripping up part of the embankment in order to be able to get it all out. But clearly, there are some areas that, you know, like, there's a rug out there that somebody clearly tossed a rug over the side, right? I think all of our sides of the roads in some areas have those challenges, where people, instead of disposing of properly, decide that they're going to just pull over and toss. I think that we've gotten a really good, we have a lot of the public that calls to tell us when they see that, when they see items like that, or when they see it happening. If we can identify, you know, if, if there's identifiable information in it, we, we have been able to successfully locate the people that have dumped in the past, so we, we have taken action on that. So, I-
And then going back-
I think we've been able to slow it down.
Well, and then going back to the clauses in the, in the transfer to the town, there's a lot of conditions on all that, of non, you can't disturb-
Yes.
Certain things, and that puts it in another-
It does.
Where does that come in?
Yeah, so there's conservation easements on both of the, on, on both parcels. There's conservation easements, and that, the conservation easements do have restrictions in what we can and can't do on the parcels, right? And so, we have to abide by those, and some of those restrictions are about, you know, not removing vegetation, not cutting down trees, not doing certain things like that. It does allow for the creation of hiking trails. So, we would have to, you know, again, work with legal to determine what is, what can we get done, what can't we get done, what, what can be done in a restoration attempt that wouldn't violate a conservation easement? So, there's a lot of things that have to work in concert with each other.
So, that's why this gets to be a very costly ju-
Again, I wish there was an easy button on this one.
Well, no, I mean, they, they put a lot of work in this, that's the-
They did.
And it was like, it's, 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 maybe it, we should have seen it sooner, so that they didn't put all that in, and then, you know, we could address this before they did what they did, but I mean, it's, that's water over the dam right now, but-
Yeah.
So, we're just gonna keep an eye on this, but then, I guess, we gotta at least start with the legal stuff, look at what the restrictions are that way, and then pursue the cleanup.
Yeah, I think if we can look at a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 on this parcel, then I think it'll give us a better understanding of what we're potentially facing, and then I think it'll give the town a better understanding as to path and direction, which direction do you want to go down with the parcel.
See, and there's also an AT&amp;E, AT&amp;T easement that goes right down through there, too, that they're on top of all of this, so-
There is.
So, that gets to be-
So, we have to be careful with that.
Another, another layer of, how long that, if that's even usable anymore with, you know, you know, our hard, hard foam lines and whatnot, but-
Any further comments, questions?
I worry a little bit, if you do a Phase 2, are we then required to do cleanup?
Not necessarily, no. I mean, we've, we've had other parcels that we have done Phase 2's on, but we don't have enough money to do the next phase, and it ends there. It means that when we go back, we potentially have to redo some of that work before we go to do it again. Ideally, we want to be able to move forward towards some level of cleanup, but it does give you a better understanding of, you know, what is our potential, you know, what is a potential Phase 3 ask, and then, you know, what are we potentially looking at for cleanup?
So, we gotta dissuade the public from, like, even trying to use that AT&amp;T line to get down, people are going fishing down there and what, and it's almost like we gotta, not for public use, or where, what is that, where do we go there?
Yeah, I mean, we can put up some signage there that says, you know, no public access. Same with, like, where the front entrance of that trail is for right now, just to say no public access. And, you know, you can put up all the signs-
Yeah, I know.
-that we want.
Just, I, you know, I'm just-
I feel like we make signs all the time. I think only the frogs read the signs.
You don't even know what they're looking at.
I think the frogs read the signs.
That's a, that's a, that's a tough place, it, it's, you know, nice along the river, but boy, people have just-
Mr. Wood.
Taken a disadvantage.
So, you know, I think we'd all be remiss not to say thank you to Donna, to Jean, to the Girl Scouts, the whole team that has really done a phenomenal job of trying to do all this, and we do appreciate all that work-
Right.
-that was put in. Obviously, we, we have a lot to look at and make determinations on, but, you know, I, I agree with Ed's comments there, you know, they've put a lot of work in, and I'd hate to see all that effort go into waste because of people and unfortunately dumping things. I remember growing up on Cranberry Bog, people used to throw things in the bog all the time. I don't recommend that.
No.
I strongly discourage it, just in case anybody's listening thinking that's a great place.
No.
You know, but it really, obviously, these things, they don't, nobody thinks about it when they go dumping it somewhere, but this has lasting impact throughout the years going on.
And if anybody, if any council members, if anybody wants to take a walk out there to go take, you know, take a look at it and see firsthand, more than willing, you know, staff and I can get you out there, we'll walk, walk down there and show you kind of what those areas of concern are. So, just reach out.
I might take you up on that next Friday.
Okay.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item up on the agenda is 14A, unfinished business for Town Council actions. Consideration in action on a resolution to authorize the town managers to expend $100,000 of American Rescue Act funding for the Wyndham 4H Dam Repair Project. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made by, I believe it was Mr. Grandelsky, seconded by Mr. Wood. Ms. Gloria, if you could just go over this briefly, I know we've already talked about it.
Sure. This is the, Wyndham 4H put in a request for the use of the American Rescue Plan Act funding that the town received. Their request was originally in the amount of 50,000. The fiscal subcommittee reviewed the request again in August. They had reviewed it previously and requested a presentation to the town council back in May. The Wyndham 4H came to the council back in May, gave a full presentation on what the project was back in May. It came back before the fiscal subcommittee of the town council in August, and in that review, the fiscal subcommittee supported increasing that 50,000 request to 100,000, and was recommended to the town council for the approval at 100,000. The town has now fully received all of the ARP funding that we were intended to receive. The appropriations that the town has appropriated, about 1.8, and that really, that still leaves 2.1 remaining of the funding, 2.1 million remaining of funds to be still appropriated, and the funds need to be committed by December of 2024, expended by December of 2026. In your packets, as was spoken in the public hearing, the $100,000 amount that, that cost is gonna be used to do the repairs needed to the dam that were, that was from the Hurricane Ida. So, they'll be doing, they'll be doing repairs to the dam to take care of the damage that was done during that storm, and hopefully having the pond ready for use for this upcoming camp season.
Thank you. As chairman of the fiscal subcommittee, this, as Ms. Gloria said, it did come before us a few times. Initially, we wanted a little more information. We're very thankful that the Wyndham 4H did bring that information to us, and part of that information is why I had floated the idea out to my other members on the fiscal subcommittee of increasing the amount from the 500 to the 100, from the 50,000 to the $100,000. Knowing that, learning that the Wyndham 4H actually gives scholarships to Killenly's residents to be able to attend the camp, that right there shows me that Wyndham 4H is more than giving back and more than supporting our community, and this is our opportunity to use some of the ARPA funding to give back to an organization that's been giving to the town. Any more comments? Anyone else like to speak?
I was, when we first got this presented, I was like, why are we, why are we getting this? This isn't for Killenly. I was like, I want to say opposed to it, but I was, had a lot of questions, and I thought that the money should have stayed in town and stayed in Killenly, and through the persistence of everyone at the camp and all the letters and everything that we've received, I was in, all in favor of the original application, and then when I just got warmed up to that, then they doubled it, and I was like, holy moly. I was like, so I've been a hard one to win over, and I'm honestly still right on the fence, but it's, there's nothing negative to say about the whole project. Everything up there is, is for the good. It's just I, every town received these ARPA applications, and I guess I thought that each town would divide them up in their own individual town, and, I mean, there's plenty of projects we can use this on here in town, even as simple as the floor downstairs, the main floor, it could go towards that. But just so everybody know that I was probably the, the one most opposed to this, and, and when you learn about what's everything on it, I don't know how you can be opposed to it with all the good that it does, but it took a lot to get me, win me over, I guess you'd say.
Mr. Wood.
Again, I was, I've already mentioned this multiple times, I was kind of with Mr. Cattula here on the, you know, wondering about why are they submitting this to the town of Killenly, but, you know, again, knowing what you guys do for our residents, for our stu, for the young people from our town that go there, that's been amazing, and also thank you so much to all the 4H folks for, I mean, very responsive people, you know, you ask a question, not afraid to answer it. I gotta say, that is greatly appreciated, and I know, I think it was Mr. Whitehead in the last meeting there had asked about, how's this money gonna be expended, and you were pretty quick to get back to us on that one, so, you know, I want to thank you guys for educating us, you know, I will say, I needed some education, and to take and be as responsive as you have been, you know, it's just greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
I was one, when this came before us, along with Ula, we were wondering basically why you were only asking for 50,000. I think the 100,000 is a good starting number. I also hope that by Killenly voting yes on the 100,000, other towns will step up, specifically Ponfret, but I really think it's important, you guys serve a need, especially in today's society and after COVID, not to use COVID, but kids really suffered the most. And, you know, with being stuck in the house and not seeing their peers, no socializing, I think it's really important for kids to get outside and get to be able to be out in nature, and, you know, I, I think this is a starting point, and hopefully, the other towns will step up, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. I completely agree with you. I, I was gonna mention that, I completely agree that I hope other towns in the area step up to the plate and try and help you out as much as they can as well. Ms. Barclay.
So, I remember when I was door knocking with Michelle, that we did have a couple people that asked how Killenly can help the 4H camp, and I remember bringing that up to Mary, so that would have been quite a while ago, so I'm glad they applied for the ARPA funds.
Thank you. Ms. Murphy.
I just have two things, and I'm not sure if we can clarify here, so we know where we are in the project. So, the 100 grand is gonna take care of the Ida stuff. Are we doing the retaining wall? Did you do the retaining wall, or is that without?
That's not part of-
We would have to, we have to suspend-
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second that motion.
Motion has been made by Mr. Cattula, seconded by Mr. Grandelsky to suspend the rules. Discussion-
Thank you, guys, sorry.
All those in favor, say aye.
I'll just, so I know where we are.
Opposed?
Yep, aye.
Okay.
No.
Nope.
I'm not opposed.
At this point, add any questions, ask away.
I didn't get it in time to get my aye.
The Ida repairs consist of excavating where the scouring out of the soil was, and building a formation of riprap along the side, that one side of the stream on the toe of the dam. The original overall-
Is it possible that they can speak into the microphone?
Oh, yeah, actually, yes, please come up and speak, up to the podium.
What I was saying was that the, the Ida repairs consist of excavating a level where the, the toe of the dam was scoured out, and, and building a riprap bank on the toe of the dam along the side of the stream below the spillway. The, the original overall plan, which is of repairs, is a million dollars or in that neighborhood, had at one point a large retaining wall, that they would have taken out the Ida repairs and put the retaining wall there, once, and we just said, we can't do that. We can't spend $100,000 and take it out again and build something else once we have more money. This has to be a finished product, once we get it put in there. We don't have that kind of money to throw around. So, right now, I'm waiting for a revision to the overall plan that takes that large retaining wall out and moves the spillway over to the center, so that the stream, the flus, the spillway of the stream goes perpendicular to the dam, rather than have a repeat of it scouring along the bottom of the dam.
Good, thank you. That's major, so there's the gate and maybe the weep holes, but you've got one of the major things done with this money, if you get the money, right?
It's the Ida repairs.
Yes.
It doesn't, it doesn't address excavating down to the-
Yep.
-to where the weep holes are and the drain.
Okay.
All of that will-
Still major, but, major accomplishment, so good for you.
Bit of construction to go, yeah.
Yep. And so, the other thing I want to say is why I really like this project is because projects will come in, in front of us, and they're really like a one-time item. You know, I want to buy this, or we're gonna do this for this year, and like everybody says, this is gonna go on and on and on for many, many years after I'm gone, and so, I'm very much in support of this project. Wanted to clarify, just so people, you know, in the public can see, there's still some more done, but this is major to get the, the Ida repair done, so that's my thought.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions? Mr. Whitehead, did you have anything?
No, my question was answered, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further comments, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on the agenda. Next item up is 14B, consideration in action on a resolution to authorize the town manager to expend $200,500 of American Rescue Act funding for the fire department life, safety, and communication upgrade. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
I'll make that motion.
Motion has been made by Mr. Cattula, seconded by Ms. George. Ms. Gloria, could you go over this, please?
Sure. So, this item purchases three of the, three remote mobile radios for each of the fire departments, and one Lucas chest compression system for each of the fire departments. The mobile radio units would allow the interoperability with- The mobile radio units would allow the interoperability with federal, state, and other local partners who would allows for an expanded operability. It's not just the local operation. The town will purchase the radios. The departments will have them installed into the actual vehicles themselves. I will say that at your last meeting, Mr. Cattula asked whether or not there was gonna be an increase in any of the equipment. We did finally get a new quotes on the Lucas devices. So, the increase, and the, so the communications equipment appears still to be fine. That quote has remained the same. The Lucas devices, that has increased $6,000. So-
Per unit?
No, in total.
All total?
In total. That's really not bad. I was, we were expecting substantially higher. So, I would make a request that the council might consider modifying the number from $200,500 to $206,500 for this request. And that will still maintain all the same level of equipment for all of the, all of the departments. Again, in your last month's council packets, you received public comment and support from several of the agencies, several of our departments. Unfortunately, I know that all of them are, or most of them are responding right now to a situation, so.
I just have one question. Because we're changing the amount on something that had to go through public hearing, do we have to bring this back to public hearing?
No, I did actually check with legal on that. I just stepped out of the room.
He just ran off.
I know. No, I actually checked with Rich on that beforehand. He said, no, because we're, this is not, because we were having the project authorized, not necessarily the dollar number. So it's not an ordinance, it's a resolution. So the council can modify a resolution. It's not an ordinance. So you can modify this without having to go back through public hearing.
Okay. And if that wasn't the case, could we have just then made another motion later on to add the $6,000 and not have to go to public hearing, because it would only be $6,000?
Yeah, you could. Yeah, I mean, you could do it now. You could do it another time. But it's just, I don't want to have the price increase again.
Understandable.
I'd like to amend, is it gonna be an amendment, or to-
Amend the motion on the table.
Amend the motion on the floor to, for a consideration in action on a resolution to authorize the town manager to expend $206,500 of American Rescue Act funding for the fire department's life, safety, and communication upgrade.
Okay. So we've got a motion to amend the motion by Mr. Cattula, seconded by Ms. George. Discussion regarding the amendment.
Considering the amendment and overall with my own relationship with the fire department still, I'm recusing myself on all of this.
Thank you. Any other comments on the amendment? Mr. Whitehead?
No.
Thank you. Seeing no more comments, all those in favor of approving the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So the amendment passes, now we have to vote on the amended motion.
A second.
You already have a motion on the floor.
Yep, we are, yeah.
You have to redo it.
Yep.
So now you're just voting on the main motion.
Is there any further discussion on the motion as amended? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Mr. Wood, are you abstaining?
No, he recused. We've already documented his recusal.
Okay, all right. I heard discussion over there, and I wanted to-
No, we got it.
Clarify. Okay.
We got it.
All right, motion carries. So we'll move on to the agenda. Next item up is consideration in action, it's 14C, consideration in action on an ordinance to authorize acceptance from David and Josephine Tripodi of a permanent drainage easement and rights to drain for drainage improvements at 249 Bailey Hill Road. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
So moved.
Motion has been made by Mr. Woods, seconded by Ms. Barclay, I believe it was. Ms. Gloria, if you could go over this, please.
Sure. This is just formalizing an area for drainage easement along Bailey Hill. It, sorry, my brain is just not functioning tonight. The surface water right now goes through, crosses under Bailey Hill into a culvert, and it carries under Coomer Hill Road, and ultimately goes to the outfall of this. We're just looking to, we're looking to eliminate that open channel, so that way we have, for ease of maintenance, we can go in there and maintain it on a more readily basis. But the water currently is going there. We don't have a drainage easement right there. When we find areas that we have where there's active drainage that we have to maintain, and we don't have a drainage easement, we look to get a drainage easement put in place. So that way we have it on record. The property owners have been very amenable to putting a drainage easement in place. The value of that easement is substantially below the $5,000 mark. And I was just looking to see if I had, I have, I have the number, and I want to say, both of them are, they're under like $150 each of them. So, they're fairly in substantial in cost.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from council? Mr. Whitehead?
No, sir.
Thank you. Seeing no comments, questions, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to item 14D, consideration in action on an ordinance to authorize acceptance from Tammy Rainville and Robert LaBouny of a permanent drainage easement and rights to drain for drainage improvements at 146 Pineville Road. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
I'll make that motion.
Motion has been made by Mr. Cattula, seconded by Ms. Barclay. Ms. Gloria, if you could.
Sure. So this is gonna be a new drainage area that we're looking at. So this is really in response to a building plan that was submitted. They're looking at building two-bedroom residents with a detached garage. And so, we need to have an established drainage area. So we've, working with the property owner in determining where that discharge, that stormwater discharge should be. So that way, it's also not impacting any potential Leachfield area or anything like that. So, this map that you have is really super busy, because it is their, it is their construction map. It's, it's gonna, it's where they're looking at in building the property out. But again, property, the property owners have been very supportive in granting this easement to the town for no consideration.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from council? Mr. Whitehead, anything?
No, sir.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to the agenda. Next item up, 15A, new business, consideration in action on a resolution authorizing fiscal year 2021 through 2022 budgetary year-end transfers. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandelski, seconded by Mr. Wood. Ms. Gloria, if you could go over this, please.
Sure. So this is a part of the year-end process. So we're closing out fiscal year 2022. That ended in June 30th of this past, this past June. So we go through all of our, all of our budgets. So to understand this, you have to recognize that within each of the department's budgets, the, there are three appropriation lines, the personnel line, the contractual services line, the materials and supplies, and then the fourth one would be any capital outlay. If any of those are in excess, then we need to look to transfer within the department. So the vast majority of the transfers that you're seeing tonight are staying within the departments, which means the department overall managed within their department. They may just have to transfer from personnel to contractual services or vice versa, right? So they manage within those departments. A few of them exceeded in totality the department budget for a few reasons. The first one is with regards to the town hall building. Our electrical costs have continued to rise for this building. So I do have engineering working with finance to go through to look at, energy auditing this building to determine what is driving our electrical consumptions for this building, because the, the electrical costs have continued to rise on this building. So that, we're looking to have that transfer from contingency, that's a $3,600. The next one is from parks and grounds. That transfer is related to the retention of personnel. I needed to make a, I adjusted the seasonal staff. We've had a fair amount of difficulty in retaining our seasonal park staff, which is key to maintaining. We have a lot of property that we maintain during the summer months. And we have quality parks. We want to maintain those quality parks. And you have to have staff that are capable and able to do the work. And so I needed to make a market adjustment in order to be able to retain that staff. And we were successful in doing that. It did mean that we ended up exceeding the overall budget. The next one, the other town buildings, we had unforeseen water infiltration that took place in the Bugbee Building. And so we had to do some repairs on that building related to that water infiltration. The next one is with regards to the paramedic intercept. That line item is strictly, strictly based on call volume. So it all depends on how many calls we are, that occur through the year. And we've had more, an increase in call volume for emergency transport. The last one that is going for, that was needing to be transferred is for employee benefits, and that is directly related to the pension program. So it's kind of twofold. One is the actual, the pension itself, we needed to do for market-related matters, but also our pension program, the 457B, not the, not the town-defined benefit plan, but the defined contribution plan, which does not leave a lasting liability to the town. We've had a higher enrollment in that. So we like to see the enrollment on that side, because it doesn't maintain that higher long-term liability for the town. So that enrollment did increase in the, in this past year. So in totality, we have, coming from contingency, just over $18,000. The contingency balance has an available balance of $83,000, so more than sufficient funds in order to be able to absorb this, this transfer. The Fiscal Subcommittee reviewed all of these transfer requests at their October 3rd meeting, and they unanimously recommended them to the council for approval.
Thank you. I just have two questions. Do you monitor, well, the EV charging stations? That comes off of the electric from the town hall, correct?
So the EV charging station is the town hall. It is part of the town hall's electric bill, yes.
Do you monitor how often that gets used, or how much consumption there is on that? Because I'm wondering if we're seeing a higher usage, and that might be contributing to the higher electric bills.
Our engineering department has, has looked at that. However, the electrical demand that that would supply, even if we were consistently having a new person plug-in all the time, 24 hours a day, would not drive the demand that we're, drive the numbers that we're seeing. So, that, you know, if somebody plugs in there and leaves it plugged in like all day long, it doesn't keep charging, right? It eventually stops charging, and it just sits there. So, that does have some impact, but it's not, it's not the driving reason for, for this increase. So that's what we need to, that's what we're trying to dive into more, is trying to better understand, you know, what's driving, what's driving this, this impact. So, that maybe, and maybe it might be a bunch of little factors, you know, that we have to, that all add up, you know, you know, in sync with each other. So, I mean, we are, we're looking at the HVAC system. How much of that could be potentially contributing, as people have more capacity to be able to turn on and off fans in their own individual spaces, and have them on for longer durations, or shut them off, all of those things. So, the, and the cooling, how, you know, how long was our cooling season this year? So, or last year. So those are all factors that we're trying to determine how much of that had an impact. So that is one, one avenue that we're looking at. And we have, we are looking at a grant through Eversource to change out the EV charging station to one that has an app where a person pays for the actual, to charge. So, no, this, the charging station that we have right now, part of the grant that, when we received that charging station, part of that grant was that we had to absorb the cost of that electricity for the first three years of that program. We couldn't charge out on that grant. The EV chargers that were part of that grant process did not easily convert to third-party chargeout. So they didn't come with like, you know, card swipes or mobile app components that were readily available, and you would have to nearly change out the entire component in order to be able to activate it for an outward-facing component. So that, that's why we've not switched it. A long time, well, way past three years. I was here as finance director when I went in, so it's been a number of years. I'd have to go back and look. But with the new, with the one that we're looking at, we would, it would automatically come with an app. We wouldn't have to absorb any of those costs for any period of time. We would automatically be able to have it be an outward-facing. And most of EV charging stations now are, it's an app, that they reserve the spot, and it only chart, if they, if they leave themselves plugged in for beyond a certain period of time, it escalates the charge to basically force people to move their vehicle. So that way, people don't just use it as a regular parking place, but to move it away, so that way others can actually use it for charging. So, so there's a number, there's a number of things you can do with, with the app that's in there. But it would basically offset any electrical costs. The town can pass those costs through, and we would be able to offset those costs that would be generated by that EV charging location. So stay tuned on that. But for now, we're still trying to peel that, kind of the onion on this one with, with the town building.
Now, looking at this grant, is that grant only for EV charging stations here, or is the town looking at other?
I have five, I think we have five locations total that we've submitted for right now. So we're waiting to hear back from Eversource, and then the package basically will have to come to Fiscal Subcommittee once we have an idea from Eversource, what the, what the financing, what the financing package looks like.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from council? We'll wait for you to come back. Seeing no further comments, Mr. Whitehead, did you have anything?
I was just curious, how come we haven't, why didn't we change over years ago, if we, if the town keeps paying for us?
Because we have to buy a whole new charging station, and that's $10,000 to $12,000 at a minimum. We haven't had the funds to do capital, that capital project. So we've, Eversource has a, has a big push out-
a, has a big push out right now to switch over to new EV charging stations with a really heavy incentive package. So we're trying to take advantage of that at this point to be able to switch, switch it over.
Okay. Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to the agenda. Next item up is 15B, consideration and action on a resolution authorizing the transfer of fiscal year 2021 to 2022 unexpended funds from unexpended department, departmental budgets to special reserves and programs. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Wood, second by Ms. George. Ms. Gloria, if you could go over this, please.
Sure. So again, this is just year-end transfers, moving, this is however, using, moving unexpended funds from department budgets into reserve accounts. So for the highway department and winter maintenance, so essentially in the from column, the whole first portion of that, from highway supervision, central garage, highway, winter maintenance, typically you would have, we would have come to you looking to move any remaining funds from winter maintenance into our winter maintenance reserve. This year, we're asking that all of these funds be moved into the capital C and R for capital outlay for highway. We've had a significant increase in cost of vehicles, and that is definitely impacting replacement schedules for our vehicles. So we think that it would be better utilized to put towards vehicle replacements. Our winter maintenance reserve is very healthy, so we are, and we're moving into the winter with a fully stocked salt shed. So we, you know, we're in a very good position moving into a winter. So I feel very comfortable with, you know, taking even the small amount that we had left from winter maintenance and moving it towards the capital outlay for the highway department. That would help to move some of those pieces of equipment and kind of bridge that gap for market value that we've, everybody has seen it. And heavy-duty equipment's no different. So that was important. The other ones, recreation. So recreation, we had funds left over in recreation. In personnel, a large portion of that funding was remaining with regards to seasonal staff, and that was because we'd gotten grant funding for our, some of our camp, our camp staff last summer. So we didn't have to expend operating budget on the, on the camp staff. So my proposal is to utilize the remaining funds in recreation and put it towards the capital projects at Owen Bell, specifically the irrigation projects at Owen Bell. To, and I know I've reported to the council before how we're looking at doing dredging the pond at Owen Bell. We have right now funding, we have $75,000 in funding for that project. We're estimating that project to be somewhere closer to the neighborhood of $125,000 to $150,000 for that project to occur. This would definitely help come closer to bridging that gap. We will likely still have a smaller gap that we're going to have to come up with funding for, but this would definitely help to bridge a good portion of that. And it is, you know, this funding was approved for recreation purposes. Owen Bell is our biggest recreational facility, outdoor recreational facility, so I thought it was a good use of those funds. And then lastly, the remaining funds within law enforcement to go to the reserve for constabulary as we continue to, you know, build our, our constabulary. The largest unspent funds on that is in the contractual services, and that is because the state of Connecticut, so with our resident state trooper contract, the state gives us our bill for the year, at the end of the year, in June, not at the beginning of the year, the end of the year. We got noticed, really at the very end of the year, that they gave us what the actual, what they were actually going to charge us for their fringe benefit rate, which was substantially lower than what they had been previously projecting the fringe benefit rate was going to be. I think this is like the first time I've ever seen the state come down on fringe benefit rate, ever. Jen had to like make sure I was sitting down when she told me about it, because we had to read it three times. So that is the big difference there is because of how the state modified or changed their billing to the towns for the resident state trooper program and what they charged us for the fringe benefit rates for the resident state troopers. So that was the big savings there. But again, moving that into the reserve for constabulary, that will be able to help us build forward this program and alleviate impacts on the upcoming budgets. If we add additional constables, we could potentially purchase vehicles out of the reserve for constabulary as opposed to having to build that into the operating budget at the same time. So this can definitely help alleviate some of that pressure. And I believe in your information, we included the balances of each of these reserve accounts, so that way you would have them as well in each of them. Any questions?
Ms. Murphy?
I just had a couple, so I understand. So one would be, do you ever go into different departments? Like if you've got a million bucks in law enforcement, do you ever put that in another department?
So typically, no. We typically try and stay within the departments because that's how the, so the way I look at the budget is the people voted on a budget and voted on the use and purpose of those budgets, right? And so, like for recreation, the people voted on a budget that included X amount to be spent on recreation purposes. We didn't end up using it all for those recreation purposes. And so I try, in, in this proposal to you, it's really trying to match and mirror what that intent was to what the, what the potential use would be. So that's what we try and do, is match it that way.
Okay. And so the, the winter expenditures, that's last winter. What's left over from last?
Correct, correct. This is all last year's budget.
Any further questions? Mr. Grandowski?
On the C and R for the highway?
Yes.
Now, so the $91,000, how does that get, that gets allocated as a lump sum, and it can be used on any vehicle? Because normally you track the vehicles and there's the, your depreciation rates and, so this is, this is-
Yeah, we're very specific about our vehicles on that C and R.
This is almost a nightmare, a nightmare.
Not necessarily.
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, so not necessarily. What we really, so on a, a little window into the C and R and the calculation of that, what we do is we have the value of the vehicle by VIN number, and we have how much we've been depreciating, depreciating and how much we put into that C and R each year, right? So you, the town can only spend X amount, X amount of money on this vehicle for the VIN. So what we've done is Matt has gone through and evaluated which vehicles are getting ready to come up and be due for replacement in the next three years, and we know how short they are. So this will get applied to the first ones, right? So if we know that whatever, X dump truck that's due next year, and we know that it needs to get replaced. So number one, whenever we look at this, the first question out of my mouth every single time is, do we really need to replace it? Just because it comes due on the schedule, right? Just because the schedule says that it's time for it to be replaced does not necessarily mean we go out and buy a new dump truck, right? I, I want to know whether or not the vehicle truly needs to be replaced, right? These are fleets, right? So it's not the same as running your personal vehicle, right? This is a fleet vehicle. And so it's a commercial-run operation. So we look at maintenance, we look at breakdowns, we look at all of those components to determine, is it time for it to move on before we start having to do a lot more heavier investment in time, in maintenance and in repairs, and it's time to buy a new one? If that's what it means, if the dump truck really does need to get replaced and we are $50,000 short, well then $50,000 of this $90,000 goes to that vehicle. The next vehicle on the list, let's talk about the next vehicle on the list that needs to get replaced. And then that one may be short, whatever, then, so we chew up this $91,000 that way, right? So we start with the most desperately needed vehicle, and then we come down from there.
So that's like stays in its own separate account?
Yep.
So now when you don't have that, so then, and when it comes budget time and you need a vehicle?
We ask for-
Then you ask for, okay, because that came up, was it two years ago?
Yes.
There was something in the budget because there wasn't enough money to-
Correct.
I believe that was a dump truck.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you will see that typically what happens is when there is not enough money within the C and R fund in order to fund the replacement of it, we then have to do an ask within the budget. So there may be an increased ask in the C and R line, and we detail that as, you know, we need an additional 20, 30, $40,000 for X vehicle because of, you know, uh-
And that was a tough sell a couple of years ago. That was, maybe it was confused by the, I don't know, but I mean, so this, this-
Well, it can be challenging, and that's-
Yeah.
And that's why I look at, you know, these are, all of these funds were approved for highway purposes-
Highway, yes.
And the maintenance of the highway vehicles. And so that's where I look at this as being able to help leverage and reduce that potential impact in the future by moving it to C and R when we know that we have substantial changes in market value.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions? Mr. Whitehead?
I have one.
Go ahead.
The, the constituents voted on a budget, I agree. And if we're under budget, I think we should strongly reconsider putting that, putting that monies back into the general fund and not just finding another way to expend that money. We're given a responsibility to control the money, not just because if it's okay for recreation, we have this amount of money left over, that means we operated correctly, we operated under budget, proposed budget, and we didn't go over. So we're responsible. I don't think it's a great idea to just take the constituents' money and just find a different place to find it. Not a question, it's just a comment.
Thank you. I just want to comment on that real quick. I completely understand where you're coming from on that. As far as the recreation thing, the dredging project that we're going to be doing at Owen Bell Park is something we've been discussing for several years now. So if we did let this roll, this money instead of transferring it into these accounts, if it did roll back into the general fund, then when that project comes up, we would basically be dipping into the general fund at that point, basically using the same money instead of right now designating it to be used for something that has to do with recreation. Whereas if it rolls back into the general fund, then the money that was appropriated for recreation could at that point get used on anything. So I, just to give you a little bit of information of my thought process on that, in a scenario like this, we are in a sense, and I agree with you, it's great that we came in under budget on these things. But I just want to, I, I look at it from the standpoint that we are kind of keeping it in the same lines of what the money was originally intended to be as far as keeping it in those departments.
Right. I understand that, but I just think it's a, it's a global idea to, if you have extra money spent, I mean, it should be put back. I mean, we, you know, just, we talking about the, the extra cost for, for new dump trucks and, you know, if they're, if they're truly used and abused and need to be replaced, that's one thing, but, you know, we don't need another Lexington, I think is what I'd like to say.
I hear you. All right, thank you for that. Any further comments, questions from council? Mr. Kertul?
I'm ready to vote.
Okay. I saw you reaching for your mic. Seeing no more comments or questions? Oh.
I'm doing the same thing.
All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Oppose.
Mr. Whitehead is opposed. Motion carries eight to one. We'll now move on to the agenda. Next item up is consideration and action on a resolution approving the transfer of fiscal year 2021 to 2022 unexpended, unexpended funds from the Killonee Conservation Commission, Killonee Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission, and Killonee Agriculture Commission Appropriations to the Open Space Land Acquisition Fund. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandowski, second by Ms. George. Ms. Gloria, if you could go over this, please.
So this is, so this is again, an annual consideration for the council. In the code of ordinances, it stipulates that the council may transfer any unexpended funds from these three commissions at the end of the year to Open Space Land Acquisition Fund. And the Open Space Land Acquisition Fund currently has a balance of just under $230,000. The total amount of this transfer that's presented to you tonight is $1,680. So there was a residual balance on each of those three commissions.
Thank you. Ms. Grandowski?
Looking at, going into it, being at the conservation and whatnot, we've been looking at doing a forest management plan at the Chase Reservoir, and it seems like that's out of reach, because normally you do a, 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 a plan, and if you harvest the timber, you can kind of get a wash. But what's out there is there's no value to any of the material. Is there something, maybe we should be, you know, we put it in the Open Space Land Acquisition account, but then again, the small amount, again, the same thing, it's a small amount, or maybe the excess conservation money, put it into a, but that, I would be creating another, another account. I don't know.
And I think honestly that it is possible that the Open Space Land Fund might be able to still be utilized for some of that management, for some of those management tools as well. So we have to go through and look at that, but, you know, it is used for natural resource protection, preservation, and acquisition of land. So, you know, it's forest management plan and the execution of a forest management plan, preservation actions. So we have to go through what, you know, what could be the potential funding source for some of those, some of those actions that have to take place. And yes, with a, with a forest management plan, when you've never done any active management of a property, and you put in place a forest management plan, especially on say like Chase Reservoir, there's a lot of standing dead wood right now, that is expensive to remove. Many times, in a forest management plan, you ideally would have it harvested at certain periods of time when there's still valuable wood on the property. So that way you are managing the health of the forest, but it's not costing you a ton of money. Usually a, a true forester that's going to come in and harvest and manage the forest, they're going to take out the dead wood as well as the, as well as the harvestable wood, the sellable wood at the same time, and they'll, and they'll help maintain the forest. But when you have a lot of dead wood, it's just going to cost money. So that's going to be a challenge once our conservation, you know, once the staff gets through with pulling together that forest management plan, goes through Conservation Commission, Conservation Commission has an opportunity to review that, determine what their plan and path forward is. I would expect that the Conservation Commission is going to be able to make some sort of a recommendation or a request at some, at some point as to what needs to happen on some of those properties. But you first have to have the plan in place, which will start with, well, this is what you have to do to clean it up, and then this is the steps to maintain it going forward.
Because this has been on the burner for-
A while.
Since I've been on, ever since I've been on the council, you know, it started, oh, we're going to have a forest management plan. Oh yeah, you have the plan, and you do a timber harvest, and maybe there's a wash, you know, pretty much, and we got no money.
There's also a fair amount of education that has to go in with implementing a forest management plan because I, I think there's a lot- management plan because I think there's a lot of challenge around having people understand that it's natural and healthy for a forest to be harvested, for someone to go in and harvest timber out of the forest and remove it while it is still healthy and viable wood before it's dead. I think there's a lot of challenge around that public perception of that. And so there is a lot of education that needs to happen around that because some, some people are very put off by seeing live trees removed out of a forested area and they, and they become very agitated and upset over that. And understandably so, it's about understanding and educating people that a forest, the natural life cycle of a forest is really that it, eventually it dies and it burns. That's what happens with a natural forest, forest, forest fires that occur. Forest management plan essentially helps to alleviate the, alleviate or reduce the potential of a substantial forest fire. So that way you can harvest out some of that load out of the forest. It allows the lower vegetation, the ability to grow, so you don't have all the same age wood. It allows you to have different age wood throughout your, throughout your forest and it allows for your, for different vegetation growth and different use of different spaces. But you have to, have to have a plan for that.
Just to add one thing real quick to, you were speaking about the forest fires. One thing that a lot of people don't realize is if a tree falls down, rots and decays, it emits the same amount of CO2 and the same amount of heat as if you burnt that same tree.
So just a procedural question. When you make a transfer like this with commissions, do you go ask each commission or no?
No, so this is actually part of the ordinance and actually the commissions had come to the council and asked for this year, this goes back years, this is when the ordinance was put in place. They had actually asked for this. I think Donna was actually pivotable, pivotable, pivot.
Pivot.
Pivot. I can't speak tonight, I swear. In, in actually asking for this and moving for this revision and it's a way for the Open Space Land Acquisition Fund to have little bits of growth over time.
See, and then there's not enough money in the Open Space Land Acquisition Account to even buy anything. It's such a, you say it's 200, 200,000 plus, that's peanuts. You can't, you really can't even, so what we're doing, we're trying, but it's, well, it makes a statement what the commissions are saying. But really, it's almost like when it comes to budget time, maybe they should come with a request. There might be a line item, you know, oh, $200,000 for, so piecemeal.
There has been through, through the years, there has been actually a budget line item in the, in the budget to put money in the Open Space Land Acquisition Reserve Fund annually in the special reserve budget. There has been periodically, there was years that we did $5,000 or $10,000 almost every year. And I think one year we actually, on the town meeting floor, I want to say there was a $5,000 or $10,000 that had gotten added on the town meeting floor for transfer, for an amount to fund Open Space Land Acquisition. So periodically has been funded within the budget, but this has been something that has been in place for a number of years, since before 2009.
But that's why I'm throwing out the forest management plan for Chase, seems it's there, but not much has happened. But then like Quandoc, the same thing, we should almost be looking at all the properties.
They are looking, so the staff is actually pulling out, the staff that we, in our land use department, they're pulling out and going through all of our properties. So our, our wetlands agent, she has made an inventory of all of our town-owned open space properties. She's going through to determine whether or not they have conservation easements on them, any deed restrictions on them, all of those components. And Anne Marie, our planning director, is working on management.
But now the deed restrictions could overrule a forest management plan.
Well, it depends and that's where we have to look at those deeds.
Now that I'm thinking about this, it's like.
Not typically, not, I mean, that's not typical. That's not typical, but yeah.
Just to try to get, bring this forward that I think we should be thinking about.
Yep.
Forest management plan for all the open space properties.
Yep.
Or whatever, a management plan for the open space properties, whatever.
They're working on them and I know Conservation, Conservation Commission has been trying to move forward on those.
Anything further? Mr. Wayhead?
No, sir.
Thank you. Seeing nothing further, all is in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We now have, next up is item 15D, which was added to the agenda. One thing I will ask is, do we want to go to executive session first before we do item 15D?
Do we want to do 15D and 17A at the same time at executive session?
That was, that is the other question.
I'll make that motion to go into executive session for the town manager's review and item, agenda item 17A for the sale of property and bringing in Rich Roberts, the attorney with Jen and Anne Marie. Don't need Anne Marie, I thought she was here for the sale. Okay.
We like Anne Marie.
Yes, she.
And the town manager.
And the town manager, yes.
No.
Well, you stopped me when I was at Anne, so I was, I was working my way around.
So we've got a motion on the floor. We are amending the order of the agenda. We are going to, or are we going to do item 16 first? Reports and comments. What was your motion?
The motion was to go 15D and 17A in executive session, if we wanted to.
Do that and then do comments.
Comments.
Okay. Perfect. All right. So we've got a motion on the table to amend the order of the agenda. We're actually going to skip over, we're going to table 16 for now and we will pick it back up after we come out of the executive session. We're going to go into executive session for 15D and 17A, 17A sale of property, 15D town manager's review.
Is it discussion? Like isn't there have to take a vote?
Right, well, right.
Where are we? Yeah, I went to discuss to amend.
This is only to amend the order of what we're doing, everything.
So is the motion on the floor?
There's a motion on the floor by Mr. Kertula, second by Ms. George. Discussion.
So I just wanted to know, like, is it, what happens in past precedent in terms of the public and your review? Is that like normally what we do?
There are times it's been in executive session.
For the public only?
Not so much for Ms. Gloria, but I know the previous town managers' reviews, the majority of them that I am aware of were done in the executive session.
Yeah, last year was.
Yeah, last year was public. I'm, yeah.
I would say that for my review, I'm fine with it in the executive session. I would just ask that the council may come out and just give a summary, a very brief summary of it just for the public to understand where you landed with my review. You don't have to go through any of the commentary details, but just do a summary so that way the public understands what your, you know, conclusion of my evaluation was.
All right. Any further discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, we are moving into.
Mr. Chair, could we have a five-minute recess before we go into executive session?
Yes, we will take a five-minute recess before we go into executive session.
Okay.